Recording for us?
Yeah.
All right. So, welcome to the July 8th, 2021 special meeting of the Northbrook Field School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by Northbrook Field LPAC. If there's anyone present who is recording this meeting, please raise your hand so others are aware. All right, so if we want to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just a.
So, we're, we're, our potentials Director of Special Student Services running a little bit late because of some traffic detours. So, we're going to actually start with an extra item that was originally on the agenda in May, but is it Ms. Rose or?
Ms. Rose.
Mrs. Rose is here to present about a potential trip for students to France. So, did you have any kind of presentation or just to talk? Okay.
Why don't you sit at the table? So, people can see you.
Yep. Yep.
Um, yeah, so I've been very anxiously waiting to be able to discuss this with you all. So, as I think I mentioned to some of you, this would be my fourth trip for Northbrook Field High School. So, I ran one in 2013, 2015, 2017, and I had run a trip previously to different schools. So, I have had some students asking me for the past several years when I was going to run a next trip, and then I had a child, and they said, oh, you know, wait until we hit. So, I have certain kids that have just been kind of waiting. So, I've been trying to get one hopefully set for summer for 2022, because then that would let the kids who are the upcoming seniors be able to travel. It would be just after they graduated. And then I had a whole different set of students who are interested in 2023, which is a little further down. But the trip I'm currently looking at, and I changed the company and the dates a little bit since previously in May, because I found something that worked a little bit better for the dates. The prior one, the information I sent to Mr. Lynn, it didn't coincide with the school year per se, but if we had the full four to five snow days that we normally do, I would, I would maybe miss like the last three days of school, and I wouldn't want to miss. I don't like this in school.
Right.
Powers knows where it is. It's harder to make that figure out. But so, I looked at some different dates with a different company, and this would be in the real summer, summer. So, I wouldn't have to worry about missing school and all that stuff. In the past, I had always run trips during April vacation. It is a little bit cheaper for students to go during April vacation. A lot of Europeans travel in the summer, so the summer is a little bit more. But I had students in the past express to me that they, you know, thought like summer would be cool and blah, 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 and they wouldn't have to worry about them missing school, missing school and everything. So, the current trip is through Explorca. It is just over 4,000. Part of the reason why it's a little bit higher is I've included the travel protection plans, that travel insurance is already in there. I've already included the tipping and then one of the excursions. So, normally on the trips I've run in the past, the students are required to tip their European tour director and their bus driver. So, I have them figure out that money beforehand, and they give me their euros, and then I have to give it up and tip them. So, and it's kind of more hassle. So, I have the tipping built into the cost, and then one of the excursions, we normally pay when we get there, built into the cost. There's going to be a promotion this summer at some point, or back into the fall back to school, basically whenever I want to use that promotion for $200 off. So, I will be able to get that cost down to, I think I wrote, the 39.67, and that's for the student rate. And the student rate is for anyone who's under 23. So, if I had, you know, you know, who graduated last year, they can, you know, get a chance to go, but they can go as long as they fill out their Cory and everything. So, it is, you know, it's a big chunk.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But I assume it's something that people can pay monthly, and that's why you wanted to come and talk about it?
Yeah, it can be broken in, yeah, it can be broken into monthly payments. It can be, so the monthly deductions for your debit card or on that credit card, you can pay it all month. So, there's different payment options for that. So, it was just hard with the spring having happening. I wanted to come and figure this out, and then.
Oh, yeah.
Budget, so.
Absolutely. And in terms of, obviously, I'm sure you've already talked, well, yes, you said you want, you will have an informational meeting with parents if we approve the.
Yeah.
Right, I was just.
Kids asking like.
Obviously, the COVID thing going on, the, I mean, there's, I can see there's a safety. Can you, have you looked at that? Can you explain that a little bit about?
About, so if there is, if there's some sort of like act of God, like war, terrorist attack, I mean, if there is a government shutdown due to COVID, then that would, you know, override any sort of, like the kids wouldn't have to pay a cancellation fee if the company shut it down due to COVID. That's somewhere in there in the fine print. I don't think they call it act of God in this, this company. They call it something else. But if there's like a terrorist threat, you know, government shutdown, borders are closed, and that would, you know, cancel the trip outright. If there was just, if it was just a family's like hesitancy of going, you know, if the borders are still open and people are traveling, you know what I mean, and the family chooses to cancel, then they would have to pay a cancellation fee, and they vary based on the, the time, how close they cancel coming up to the trip. With the travel protection plan that's built in, they would get back 75% of their money, and they can cancel for any reason up to 30 days prior to departure. And then there's a chart of, you know, how much that changes. It depends on how close you get to departure.
Right, sure.
And I'm sure, as Mr. Lynn knows, he's had me personally, a lot of times, they'll issue you a travel voucher for travel in the future if you do cancel. So, I haven't had, I personally haven't had any trouble with students canceling in, in the past. I had a couple of kids in the 2015 trip that one was going because their friend was going, and it was like, I think, a group of, I don't remember if it was boys or whatever, but they had their car set and going in like this trio, and then one once couldn't go. The other two decided they couldn't go, but it was early enough in the planning stages. Normally, I plan these, you know, a year and a half to, within a year and a half to two years in advance.
Right.
But because of everything happening, the timing's been completely crazy.
Right.
But they had to cancel enough where it wasn't like a big cancellation fee or issue.
Is there a minimum group size that you need for the?
Yeah, so the minimum, the minimum group size, if we wanted to have a private tour, they need 30 kids to fill the bus, which we never get for North Park Field because we're a smaller school. I think the biggest group size I probably had in 2013, I think we had 13 paying participants. Basically, if there's six paying participants, it pays my way because I can't afford to just, you know, pay for the trip outright. I have run the trip in the past with less than six kids though, and I just pay a portion of it. So, the six paying participants would pay the teacher's spot is how it works. But if there was less than six, depending on, you know, if there was like three to four, then I would just have like a reduced, a reduced rate.
So, a minute, you're looking, you're looking for probably the best would be at least a minimum of six kids, and you, you have that interest, it sounds like, right, of kids who are interested?
Yeah, I have some families who are definitely interested. I have one of my, one of my coworkers who is also a former student, French student of mine of, you know, took French one through four with me, and she works with me and my boss's daughter. Like, I have some kids, I have a girl on my gymnastics team who's a former, sorry, coworker is a former student here. She graduated two or three years ago. Like, she's seriously interested because she took French with me. So, she would be going as a paying adult, but I have some families who already expressed to me that they're seriously interested. It's just been, you know.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But if I had, if I had only, you know, four, like I would still be, you know, run it, but I would, you know, instead of paying, you know, like 4,000, whatever, I would have to pay a reduced chunk of it. I just can't commit, I can't say like, hey, if there's only one kid going, I can commit to be paying.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I've done that in the past with a really small group, and I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they match you up, like with other groups?
Yeah, yeah, they pair. Yeah, the way the companies work is they're trying to fill the tour bus. So, it doesn't, you know, if I had six kids, it doesn't make sense. The company's not going to put six people on a bus. So, what happens is you usually find out, because I've run the trips in the past with EF, and they're, these companies work right in a very similar manner. So, things are like slightly tweaked with, you know, how they do things. But once you, usually about, I don't remember if it's like a month and a half, usually like a month or two before we leave, we would find out what the other school group is that they pair stuff with. It's another school group from somewhere in the US. So, I find out where they're from, and some, and I usually, you know, talk to the French teacher from that other, you know, one year it was Maine, and one time we went with a group from, I don't remember if it was Belmont, Mass. But anyways, it can be anywhere in the US. And then once we arrive in Europe, we're paired up with them, and then we share the European tour director, and we share the bus. So, if they had like three really small groups, we would all share, you know, one bus, and then you're in the hotel with those groups as well. But I'm obviously not in charge for their kids. So, there'd be another French teacher from.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever. The kids typically make friends.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, usually works out really well, and you're going together. Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Link to make motion that we table this discussion until the August meeting, since it wasn't on the agenda, and the townspeople didn't have a chance to come in and have any kind of conversation or questions that they might have.
Um, so, thanks for the motion, Mr. Ral.
You're looking for a second, right? You're looking for a second.
To table your motion?
Yes, you're looking for a second to table a motion. You're not looking for a comment at this point. You're looking for a second, right?
I, I don't want to table them.
Well, I understand that, but that's not your prerogative as a chair. Your prerogative as a chair is to follow the.
Okay.
Rules of order.
Sure, you're right. So, do we have a second for Mr. Ral's motion, Kristy? Or Tim, do we have a second for Mr. Ral's motion? Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve Mrs. Rose's trip to France?
No, I just had one question. I just, so the summer is after school is out then?
Right, so this would be, the dates are June 28th, so next school year, if we have those five snow days, which we probably will, because I've been teaching here for 10 years, and we have a snow day. My last day with snow day, I think it's June 22nd. So, this trip is June 28th and would return on July 7th. So, it's in the summer, in the summer. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect my school year as a teacher unless we had some crazy two weeks of snow.
No, I wasn't thinking that, just with all the issues with, you know, germs and viruses. I just, that way, when the kids go, and they're not coming back into the school body.
Right, yeah, so it's truly, yeah.
Not like a Florida vacation during April break. That's what I was saying.
Right, like I said, typically, students have gone on April break, but then, you know, if they miss, and sometimes during April break, you know, the company will say, oh, we're going to fluctuate the days, you know, like your dates are this, but you might be two days prior or two days after. And that's a really popular time for student groups, so it's very, very busy for student groups. And then I have to get the dates that the students are going to miss, you know, approve that they're missing the school days because it's an educational trip. So, this way, I just figured it'd be easier to not worry about them missing school, and me missing school, and, oh, are they missing the two days before April vacation? Now, it's the two days after April vacation, all that, because this way it would just be.
Right, so school is done, and then you go on the trip, and that way, if somebody gets the flu, it's not an issue because they're not coming back.
Right, and the core group of kids that have been asking me, you know, for years to do this is before I got pregnant with the last guy, since I got back to the 2017 trip, they are now going to be seniors. So, they would technically be graduated. So, you know, technically, if they're graduated, I mean, they should fill out a Cory form. I don't know if they would have to if they've already graduated like for a couple of weeks. But if I had, you know, if one of their parents wanted to go, or in the past, I had a couple of parents go, or like an older sister, you know, they have to fill out the Cory, of course, to, you know, go on the trip because it's a school, a school trip. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So, do we have a motion to approve Mrs. Rose's potential trip to France?
I'll move to approve the trip to France. Potential trip to France.
And do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. I just, I want to comment on Mr. Ral's motion, just really quickly. So, in terms of how this worked, so Mrs. Rose was supposed to present in May, because of what we were dealing with, with the budget, she decided not to present. In June, she actually had been laid off as part of the reduction in force, so it wasn't appropriate for her to come in June. And at this point, if we leave it till August, some of our families, that we get, they'd have to pay a couple hundred dollars more for this trip. Whereas if you now have it approved, you can go forward with an informational meeting, and if people are interested and want to sign up, then they're, they're going to be able to, you know, get a lower price.
So, to the chair, if we did not have this meeting to select the student services.
Then she wouldn't have, she wouldn't have presented.
We would not have had this meeting.
Wouldn't have had this meeting to present this? Yeah, you're right. And I guess I'm confused, but why do you think the townspeople? This is, this is parents' money. It has nothing to do with towns' money. Why?
Town doesn't have a say as to whether their students travel abroad.
The town? I think, do the parents have a say as to whether or not their students travel abroad?
Surely.
Why does the town, why would my, why would anyone in the town?
Are the parents of these students not in the town? Are the other students who come to the school, are their parents not in the town? I think everybody has a right to actually have an understanding of what's going on. And the fact of the matter is, this agenda item has been available. It was available before the meeting, the agenda was set. It was available after the agenda was set, and the agenda was revised, and it still was not added to the agenda. So, I would question to the chair, since you're responsible for putting the agenda together, why wasn't that the agenda at any of those times?
You mean, oh, okay. Well, I guess it's because, you know, there was a lot going on in terms of, you know, the last few weeks of school.
Responsibility of the chair.
And Mrs. Rose wasn't aware that we were going to have a meeting until last week.
That's the responsibility of the chair.
Okay, so from going forward, Mr. Ral, I'll make sure that every item is on the agenda. But I also want to point out that as the chair, we went over this in the email, as the chair, I mean, there's, where is?
Yes, reasonably, reasonably, that is your understanding.
The listing of items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair to be discussed at the meeting. So, not all items may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law.
So, what you're saying is that this has been an issue on, on the agenda supposedly for two months.
No, it wasn't on the June agenda. It was on the May agenda.
Right, it was on the May agenda, and then didn't happen to be on the agenda for June because of the, the reduction in services. There is no reason why this should not have been added to this agenda at the time that the agenda was first produced.
Okay. In your opinion, in your.
That's your responsibility.
Sure, okay, thank you, thank you. So, moving on, Mrs. Rose, thanks for, thank you for presenting. We'll be interested to hear going forward what happens.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm really excited to tell these families this news. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to have me here.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, moving on, we have our, Mr. Colley is here. He's the recommended appointment for Director of Student Services. Hello, Mr. Colley.
Hello.
Nice to meet you.
Being late. Brookfield Road is closed, by the way. Yes.
So, if I may.
Yep.
Mr. Colley is my recommended candidate for the position of Director of Student Services. Services on the thing. It's just a thing from our service that collects this stuff. So, we had nine applicants for the position. We interviewed eight people. Reduced that down to three finalists. Had a committee come in last week, included Mrs. O'Masta, two teachers, Mr. Rigby, who represented the executive board of the Teachers Association. Mrs. Lookair, who's a special educator. Mrs. Caitlin Gaines, who's a parent of a special education student. So, we interviewed the candidates, and after going through that interview process, the committee recommended Mr. Colley, to which I agreed wholeheartedly. So, we're here to present Mr. Colley for your review and approval.
I'm usually drawing.
So, I don't know if you want to have Mr. Colley tell a little bit about his background, and then the committee certainly can ask any questions they might have.
Sure.
Thank you for listening to me, offering me the opportunity to speak. I have been a public educator for 20, 20, 29 years since I graduated from Boston University. I grew up in Massachusetts outside in Sonville. It's a lot different now.
What square?
Oh, it's great, tail square, yeah.
Oh.
Lot different when I was growing up there than when I, than what it is now. I spent a bulk of my equal time in Massachusetts as a Rhode Island, but a lot of my administrative experience is in Rhode Island. I did my first five years of teaching in Texas, and I did five years of teaching at DPS schools, Boston Public Schools. I also taught Alabama in a couple of years. Long and short of it, I've never done anything professionally, but besides working in special education, I have a, I believe I have a lot of knowledge in special education, both at national level, state level. Though I was never an administrator of Rhode Island, I was trained to be in Massachusetts. I was trained to be a teacher in Massachusetts. I did, I've been a teacher in Massachusetts. I most currently serve as the interactive learning coordinator position at a college school. This is, they kind of made it up. I oversee, I oversaw the IEP kids on their non-remote, on their remote week when they were in the building. Sounds very confusing to say, if you don't understand that. And that's what I've been doing most recently, and I very much would like to provide the opportunity to be Director of Special Services. 28 years, it's all that I've been doing in various capacities, from alternative learning schools to inclusion teachers to the interactive learning coordinator for medical schools. Thank you.
So, is there a particular attraction of Northbrook Field Public Schools?
You know, like any other job, you apply for jobs that you qualified for, and I had a radius of miles that I could travel with my family and everything. So, initially, I know, I did not know a lot about Northbrook Field, but speaking with the superintendent, and they, well, I guess, I got to give the superintendent a lot of credit. We had a very natural conversation our very first time in that. And I know procedure, why things have to be very structured, and we follow the structure, but we were able to communicate, and I felt comfortable with them, and I think he felt comfortable with me. So, I think most people will work anywhere if they feel appreciated and comfortable. So, I'm willing to travel. So, no, I didn't have, you know, Northbrook Field posters on my wall or anything like that. And I probably still, I probably still, I knew what Spencer was, and then like you just started to hunt for Spencer.
Yep.
As I'd go by three times trying to figure out.
Let's tell you the shirt.
Frustrating thing, my way tells me to go one thing, and I did my ways, and then tell me what to do with Brookfield Road is closed. It's really like closed this morning. So, it's.
Just enough.
You went really fast and jumped over that bridge.
You can't even ask anybody in the day to say, oh, repeat it, go look at your way. Say, hey, look at my way, but Northbrook Field Road, the road's closed. Help me, please.
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, you know, I think it's something that I can do well at. I think the numbers is something that opens up an opportunity to someone like me. We have 90 IEP kids, we have like 700 kids, students. I have a little experience. I know you guys don't consider yourself rural education, but I did work in a county system.
Oh, no, we considered ourselves rural.
Usually, we're rural, and Massachusetts always.
Yeah, we get, we get, we get $24,000 last year because we're a rural school.
Right, well, my wife works in healthcare, and BWI, Brigham Young Hospital is considered a rural hospital.
Oh, no way, really?
In the heart of Boston. It gets rural fund, yes. And it has to do with Ted Kennedy, and my husband, true story.
It's a story for another day. I just love your face. It was fresh. I was looking at him, but I saw it was.
So, I had some, in the county system, Jefferson County, and I worked there for three years. We bused kids further than the state of Rhode Island. Kids who bused 30 miles from Jefferson County. It's very common in a country system like Texas or Alabama. It's called county.
So, Kristy, you were on the committee. Do you have anything to add?
I was very impressed because I think he hadn't been a teacher, thinks like a teacher. I liked that you were kid first. That was the first thing that, that you said. And I have to say, it was the first time on this side of the table. I'm usually sitting where you sit. So, that was a different perspective, and it was nice, but you made me feel very much at ease. I can see you out in the population. My, I said my daughter knew Mr. Manucci. She was not happy to hear that he left because she had made a connection. She understood a name of somebody. And I think that you will grow to love us as much as, as, as we love it. And everybody knows how much I love the school. And I think that's why I chose to live here from out of state, is because we have a lot of gifts being small. So, I think you will gain a lot just being embraced by us. So, yes, I was very, I was very impressed. It was nice to meet you then. Nice to meet you.
So, from my perspective, you know, Bill and I did talk about the fact that he doesn't have a lot of experience in Massachusetts, being a Director of Student Services. But what he does have is some things, obviously, the things Kristy spoke about. And to me, it comes down to, can he create strong relationships with students, staff, parents, and the community? And that, to me, is something that we can't teach him. He's going to, hopefully, we want to find people that can walk in the door and do those things. The, the checkbox is of, was this report filled out, or was this done? That, to me, can be learned. And he's a bright man who's, you know, got many degrees and has done wonderful work in special education. I spoke to his references, who all gloat about his work ethic, his ability to create connections, and his knowledge in special education in general. So, I feel really, really good and comfortable about, about making this recommendation.
Everyone tries to copy Massachusetts anyway.
My wife's from Rhode Island. Be careful. She can have a different.
Issue. It is amazing for a state that's so small to have such a strong culture.
Absolutely.
30 miles.
Will you be bringing coffee syrup with you?
I don't blame you.
But I would bring, but I would bring anything. I'd be dill's 11A, to be honest. I have 11A too much. I have.
Yep.
Yep. They actually have coffee syrup. The autocrat lady lives in my town. That's where you always come.
Yes, yep. I buy it from my brother-in-law.
That's what I, you say three people, like, if I talk to this man over here, 20 minutes, we'll find a connection, and I know somebody she knows.
It's not this big.
Any other questions or comments or?
I'm impressed you were in the administrator for correctional school for seven years. That's a, that's a tough learning environment.
It had nothing to do, we call them residents, had nothing to do with the rest. I had, and you talked to my mentor, Joe Carden. I supervised five different unions. And my first grievance was, what's your definition of age fifteen? No, that's, that wasn't our. What's your definition of age? Where do teachers have to be? In the car, at the door, desk? And, and one of the hardest things in the correctional study is no school committee. So, whatever happened, it all happened behind closed doors. It was a public school within a state entity. And school committee is a wonderful equalizer for both the union and the administration, the parents and the teachers. And my particular union were able to play certain games because they never had to present on a monthly basis to, to elected party. And I always stayed with them. So, the residents, that we call residents, like I said, we all think we know kids and care. Nobody is more in care than a kid who's been incarcerated at 15, 16, 17 years old. The DCY involves the kids. The saddest thing about it is you look at Johnny's track record. Nine times out of 10, he was open to the department. That means my kids in need from birth, maybe to seven, eight years old, they would drop him because they, whatever, picked up again at 14 because he committed a crime. And you could see it over and over again. I don't have a social to the problem. I do not have a social, but you can see the trend overall again. So, I do like, and one thing that I do, didn't enjoy the trends, because I got to advocate those students, and that's something I enjoy a lot.
Just something that correctional facility or not, students in special education definitely need an advocate, a strong advocate for them.
As we spoke about in the, you know, in our interviews, some parents, some parents and students with special education needs, because they are, this is their most important thing in their life, their child, and the child's struggling, and they often don't understand any of the sort of edge you speak stuff that goes along and the legal stuff that goes along, and they need, they do need guidance and assistance from, from us, from our teachers, from our paraprofessionals, and from our administrators. So, again, another thing that I appreciated about Mr. Colley's the way he came across to me.
I got, because my parents were ignored, and my sister, I said, I'm not, obviously, and they wanted her medicine to be fixed straight away. And no one listened to my mother. Epilepsy is going to have two pills to go away. It's blood levels, and my hood just every change for medicine. And because she was acting on this medicine issue, didn't have any time for it, to be quite honest with you. And, you know, we all bring a bet to our job with a physical committee person, and you don't have to spend more than five minutes with me, and know my benefit.
So, in the past couple of years, we've been able to really develop our preschool program, and it's actually very well respected within, not just the community, but within the region. Is there anything, you know, you had any questions about any of our programs or what?
Preschool, I got to be honest with you, probably the thing that I'm most motivated about, but I was. Um, preschool, I gotta be honest with you, probably the thing that I'm most limited about, but I was part of Linsock's preschool program where we had, we won grant money for pushing in. We were making, I wasn't the point person, John Morrell was, but I was learning a lot by talking to her. We took over that three to five and we were providing services not only to the YMCA's and community that served with the kid, but the kids in our program too. And we were bringing more of them, and I'm not saying, getting more state funds to bring those kids into our schools. And we were pushing in services and pulling out services, pushing in OT, pushing in speech and language and those kind of things. So I would never say that when I started preschool, cause though I have a five-year-old daughter, she's teaching me a lot. But, um, I understand what is needed at preschool. What is needed is well-developed, uh, programming. If you already have it, that's wonderful. Because if you start at three, I also didn't know this, I'd be curious, what is percentage of kids who started your preschool program and graduate with? I assume it's very high. You have small transient population, I would say. Do we have a lot of kids coming and going?
I don't think we have a lot of kids coming and going, but I don't know the exact number of how many kids starting, you know, pre-K and go through grade twelve. I don't, I don't know that.
That's always something we use in Sock and other districts, because we have a lot of DL kids and we criticize for our progress in DL. We could always prove that if kids was with us from elementary school, we could make good progress with them. Kids we had a problem with, the kids that came in seventh, eighth grade, but we didn't have. So if you have a good preschool program, you should see those results going through first and second.
Absolutely.
Anything else? All right, well, since, uh, both the committee and Mr. Lindt has, uh, recommended, Mr. Colley, do we have a motion to, uh, appoint him?
I'll motion. I don't know how that works.
Well, I think we, we have to do it in a certain way, actually, so. Not yet, no.
Uh, I move to appoint Mr. Colley to the Director of Student Services. Subject to, of course, uh, you know, salary and things like that. Which we'll discuss in the executive session.
We have a second?
I'll second.
I was enjoying watching Ron encourage you from behind.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, um, we have one more item on our agenda before we'll go to executive commi- uh, committee, but thanks very much for joining us, Mr. Colley. Okay, sure, 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 sure. Hold on one second there, Mr. Colley. Yep. So we have one more item on our agenda, which is the, um, we want, we're gonna, the, uh, change slightly the way that we deal with the warrants. So right now, currently we have two school committee members who will sign the warrants every two weeks. Um, so we can, according to the Municipal Modernization Act, we can elect a signatory, so just one person and a backup signatory. Um, and then the signatory will report back to us monthly on the warrants. So, um, do we have a motion to, uh, elect a signatory and a backup signatory?
So if I could just clarify, I apologize, but I did have a conversation with Jim Hardy this morning, um, who is a field director for, uh, MASC. And he said, um, that, that he, and I don't know, I'm just going by what he said, even though it says in the statute that it applies to municipal and regional school districts, he said it doesn't apply to municipal. And I said, well, it says it does. And he said, well, um, as a school district for a municipal, uh, school, you would have to get the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Accountant before you could actually do that.
So to change our process, we'd have to go to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Accountant.
To establish a single signatory.
Okay.
Because, because what he said is right now.
Sure, so right now, we're, we're, follow the procedure we have right now is acceptable, um, for municipal district.
What he said right now is, according to the law, we need to have a majority of the school committee sign off on the warrants. And then present it to the town. I don't know what we do right now is, is an understanding, my, my understanding is we have two people. Um, but my, but according to him, we have to have three. But if we wanted to go to a single, which I'm neither opposed or, or in favor of, I don't have an issue one way or the other, we would have to have a conversation with the selectman and the town accountant to ensure that they will be okay with that after we did such thing. Additionally, going forward, um, in past experience with school committees, what we would get would be a register of all of the warrants that were signed or were presented for signature uh, at every school committee meeting, so that every school committee member would be aware of what warrants were presented. And what was signed and if there was something held back for whatever reason, superintendent would bring that to our attention. But, um, again, I'm just going by what, uh, the field director for MASC said is what we're supposed to be doing, so.
So then I am gonna make a motion that we table this until the, um, future meeting. Cause we think we can do, um, some research and figure out what's the best method for us.
Absolutely fine.
So. All right, all in favor of tabling then? Thank you. Um, so we do need a motion to go into executive session.
I move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And, or, no, that's the wrong one.
Right, sorry. Salary.
Well, we've got everything on here, huh? Is it, uh, negotiations with non-union personnel?
Yes.
I move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And to not reconvene in open session.
Second to motion.
So it has to be a voice vote? So, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Say your name. Okay.
Christie of MAST, yes.
Okay. Maria Bider Tucker, yes. Okay, so we'll see you in August for a much, much longer meeting.